To Swan County Board of County Commissioners meeting of August the 3rd, 2021, approximately 5:03 PM. If everyone please stand, we're going to have our invocation and our pledge.
Let us pray. Lord, we come before you tonight to do the work of the county. We ask you to give us guidance, make good decisions. But heavier on our heart today is the Watson family and what they're going through and their struggles. We just ask you to be with them, be with their family, be with their friends, be with their loved ones, be with the Swan County Sheriff's Department as they all come together to support this great family. We ask you to be with them this evening as they begin this process. We ask you to be with them tomorrow as they continue the service, Mr. Watson. We ask you to do all this in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first item of business this evening is approval of minutes from our July 20th regular board meeting and our July 28th fire and solid waste workshop. Mr. Pravat?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of changes to be made to the July 28th. I've already spoken with Mr. Musgrove about it, but I'll direct your attention to page 166 as they are compiled in the book. I believe that the consensus, you know, was to move forward with particular rates, but a resolution with tentative numbers would be considered for adoption at the next regular meeting. It wouldn't be directed to be adopted. And the same thing with the language there is I believe that it was directed would also appear on page 168 with the resolution would be considered for adoption. And then finally, on page 169, there's just a scrivener's error to note that commission land is commissioner land. So that's all I have is changes, Mr. Chairman.
Hearing those changes, do I have any questions or comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Land. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat. Next item of business is the consent agenda. We're going to pull items number nine and 10 for brief discussion. So at this time, I have items two through eight and 11 and 12. Do I have any questions or comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll have a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, we will go to item number nine. I would ask Mr. Jimmy Norris to come forward, please. On this item, it's authorized county administrator to submit a grant application for $25 million proposed project to improve internet technology across the county. Mr. Norris, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good to be here. I guess just a little background.
Little background, little clarification. We have some folks that have some questions and concerns, and I'd just like to give a little history on what you're working on. You've kind of been heading this up and may have some new insight for the board also.
Yeah, it's something that's definitely important to all of us here in Swan County in the residential world and the business world. And I want to start out by saying, I started down this journey with my partner in crime back here, the mayor for the city of Live Oak. Back when I first took this position, I guess in 2019, we met in the early spring and decided we had to get together, we had to do something about improving broadband in Swan County. And we have been all over the country and emailed and made phone calls and tried to figure out a way to get people better speeds, to get underserved areas served and unserved areas served. It's, there's a lot of different thoughts on how you should go about this, but long story short, like in April of that year, we actually had a meeting, and this is the list of all the people that were there at that meeting. We had it over at City Hall. And so that's where the journey started. So ever since then, two and a half years later, we still continue to work on this with a help from a lot of people. Along the way, and if there's more questions, I can answer them, but I know, you know, it won't take too long. We, it was kind of determined that when you're working in an area, it's a lot easier to try to work with a provider or existing provider that's already there because especially in rural, you just aren't going to get other providers to come in because it's just not profitable, to be quite honest with you. So we actually set up a meeting with Windstream about a year and a half ago, and Ms. Sarah came down, and we've had conversations and dialogue ever since. Of course, some others that had been there was Shannon's been a part of that. I don't see, Mr. Scott's been a part of that. Of course, the mayor's been there all the way through, and there've been some others. But we've kind of went back and forth and tried to figure out the best way to go. We kind of begged and pleaded with Windstream to try to partner with us and to help us. And during the Trump administration, they actually put out a lot of funding in his last year through the National Telecommunications and Information Administration. All right? I think that's right. NTIA, okay? So we knew that money was coming. So we met with Sarah, she came down, and of course, the group, and we started trying to put a plan together. And she assured us that we would be, out of all of the areas that they serve and the counties that serve, we would be their number one priority. And I mean, it took lots of begging, you know, I'm good at getting down on my knees and begging. So they did. And I would like to ask, you know, Shannon to come up and speak to some of the details just a little bit, not too technical, but what they have done is that they have reached out to Swan County, and they're putting us as the number one priority to apply. And again, tonight is just the ability to apply for a grant, but to apply for $25 million grant, and it does require a match. I think the requirement's only 10%. They have just stepped up and they're going to be putting it's 34, 5%, so about $8 million. The total allocation, if we were to get it, and they feel pretty confident about that, is about $33 million, and it'll be serving around 8,800 households here in Swan County. And the county's not required to have anything out of pocket. But I don't know if the mayor, Mr. Mayor, would you like to say anything to that? You've been a part of this from the very beginning, instrumental.
I'd just like to say. Thank you. I do think this is an incredible opportunity to secure funding, to expand the broadband in our county. Obviously, we all know how important it is. Educational, healthcare, economic development, personal services. There's so many things that it improves our lives. I appreciate what Jimmy's been doing. He's really gone after this very strong, and I know he's going to introduce your guest here in a moment to share some, but we're behind it. We've got support letters from our president of the council, our city manager, city clerk, and on Tuesday, we'll be adopting a proclamation to further support expansion of broadband in Swan County, which includes Branford and Live Oak. And so we're excited about it. We think it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Davis.
I'd like to ask Shannon, would you, just real quick, Shannon is, he's the brains. He knows this IT world and broadband and all that good stuff. So from the beginning, I've leaned on him real hard for the technical side, so.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, let me just first briefly state that, as some of you may be aware, when you apply for a grant, it is a multi-step process. You start with a compelling story to convince the team that's evaluating your application. You tell them the story of what you want to do, how you're going to accomplish it, but you do it at a really high level, and you try to do, provide additional information to support the plan that you want to take. What that means at this point, it's really high level. We're throwing our hat in the ring. There's some definite ideas of where we want to go. If we're awarded the grant, which we would find out on November 29th of this year, then we would go into a next phase where the county would have to enter into an agreement. As the lead applicant on the grant, the funding would come directly to the Board of County Commissioners. Now, if we roll back the hands of time, back in the Obama administration, there were these shovel-ready product projects where they, they set aside money for broadband, but it didn't go to the counties. It went to third parties who took it. And the county was basically beholden to that external group to lobby to get them to work on behalf of the county. And in my opinion, that was not the right approach, and it ended up in a failure. Didn't do much for any of the counties. This is a different approach. It's coming straight to the county. We've done something like this before with our CARES funding for rent and mortgage assistance. Money came to the county. We entered into an agreement with the third party to deliver those services. So we have done things like this before. We will know more detail once we get to that stage. You know, we would have to enter into a grant agreement, we'd have to enter into an agreement to actually deliver the service with Windstream. What they have signaled from the very beginning, in the notice of funding opportunity, the National Telecommunications Information Administration has been clear that the minimum service is what they call 100 megabits bidirectional. That means your computer transmits 100 megabits down and up over the wire. Right now, we probably have several folks in the county that have some type of broadband service that don't get near those speeds. That's the minimum. What Windstream have proposed is to drop off fiber to households. So if they put in fiber connections, that means information moves at the speed of light. And now you can drop off what they call gigabit service, which would be 1,000 megabits. So you're talking about something that's in the order of 100 orders of magnitude faster than what some people have right now. So that's very positive. From a partnership perspective, many things the county does, we have to depend on partners to pave roads, to bring in equipment, to do all types of things. From a county perspective, this is a similar arrangement. We would need help, and Windstream has been a partner in this community for a long time. They've been invested here. They understand what we need, where things are at. So from that perspective, I think they would make a very good partner for us going forward. As I mentioned, we'll know more details once we get past November. If there are folks that, any people in the county that have questions about what we're doing, what we would expect to do, I can always be contacted. I fielded some questions already. I would be happy to sit down, dialogue with anybody, answer any other questions, and provide additional information.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I was.
Mr. Fleming.
When you're talking about the broadband, and I, when I was in Jacksonville back in December, I heard some of these similar things. I think it was disseminated down to the counties, I think Mandy, I talked to Mandy about it, I think, where one of the commissioners got me talking. And during the pandemic, it showed just how important broadband would be when it came to kids wanting to go into school, they could do it, use the internet system.
So is this the same project, the same thing that we're talking about?
Yes, sir, and I'm glad you mentioned that. I spoke with Mr. Ronnie Gray this morning, and I am, I've reached out to him to ask for the school board's help. And in our conversation this morning, the situation that he described that all our educators were in during the pandemic was absolutely incredible and very bad. Basically, the school board had the technology to deliver online learning, but the problem was the kids at the other end couldn't connect to it. So what Mr. Gray told me is the school board had to devise a plan where they were basically copying lesson plans on paper, and they would take students' assignments and put them on buses that would run routes to distribute meals, and that's how they did their work. Because they couldn't connect on the other end from their home. And that's had several far-reaching impacts. So what I asked Mr. Gray to do is to create a narrative, and I think it's an absolutely compelling narrative that shows the dependence on technology has increased. And when that pandemic hit, it really showed us in very clear terms that there are parts of the county that just weren't ready for it. They weren't ready to work remotely. They weren't ready to do online learning. And that's just a connection to our local schools. What about students that want to go on to college or have difficulties? There's online courses at the University of Florida and many other institutions, but if you can't get to it from home, then you can't really participate in it if that's what you want to do. So yes, sir, I do believe what you're talking about happened in this county. We've reached out for the school board. Mr. Gray will help us summarize that and tell the story of how that happened from a frontline perspective. He'll be able to give us good, very good descriptions of that, and we'll pass that on to Windstream, and it will be included in the grant application package.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think it's important that we understand, we're not saying that we're going to solve all the problems of broadband in Swan County, okay? But we've been trying for two and a half years to get a start. This is a start, and it's going to be one hell of a start, to be quite honest with you. I mean, this is huge. This is, I don't know, grant-wise, what's large, but in my world, this is large. Usually, my grants are $5,000. So it's going to, it's going to touch 88, about 8,800 homes. And listen, we've already had communications, and Sarah's been in those too with other entities. We have other phases, even Ms. Pravat, and I've talked about that a little bit with Mr. Harris, but there's other pieces of this. But this is like, let's say, the start, the phase one. We will be able to take it from there and maybe expand on this because there's a lot of other stuff coming down the pike. But if it's okay, I would like to introduce Ms. Sarah, if she doesn't mind coming up. She's been working with us for about a year and a half. She's the vice president of government affairs for Windstream. She flew in just because she wanted to meet you gentlemen today. So I'd just, you know, like to introduce her, and she can share a couple of thoughts with you, or if you have any questions, please feel free to ask her.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Jimmy. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Please give us your name and address for your record.
Sure. You need my address? Awesome. Okay. I'm Sarah Harden. I'm vice president of state government affairs for Windstream. You can find me at 68 Cabarrus Avenue East in Concord, North Carolina.
Awesome.
And as Jimmy said, I came down just to be here with y'all today. This project's very close to my heart. I've been working on this project with Mayor Davis and with Jimmy for a long time. I want to give you kind of an idea of where this fits in Windstream's priorities. Where we are working with 11 different counties on these grants at the National Telecommunications and Information Administration. It's hard to remember. And that's housed within the Federal Department of Commerce. We're working on 11 of these grants, and this is the largest grant. So it's in Swan County that we're really going for gold. We're really, this is where we're really trying to make the biggest impact in this program because we really think that this is where the biggest opportunity is. And so we are really looking forward to partnering with you all. We're really enjoying working with the folks that we're working with, but we're really, we're really looking forward to moving this partnership forward. Just to give you an idea of how committed we are, the federal government or the NTIA is looking for, as was mentioned earlier, a funding match of 10%, and we're going to match it 35%. So we are more financially committed than required. And as was mentioned earlier, the speeds that are required in this grant program are 100 by 100, and we're looking to go 1,000 times faster in Swan County. So I think those things are really compelling just because that's, not only do we really want to win this grant here in particular because we aren't matching that high everywhere, I won't tell you where we're not, it's not in Florida, but we are really looking to make sure that this grant application is one of the most compelling to the NTIA so that it's one of the ones that's awarded. There's about $288 million available for the project as a whole. And as was also mentioned earlier, I know I'm repeating a lot of my friends here, but we've been working on this together for so long, sometimes I feel like we have a hive mind. There's about $288 million available for the project as a whole, and the Department of Commerce is looking to do grants in between the 5 and $30 million mark. So we're right, we're right in the middle. We're where the Department of Commerce is comfortable, and this is a holdover project from the last presidential administration and from the last Congress that just hadn't, that was funded by those folks and hadn't been administered yet. So broadband is always a bipartisan effort. I think everyone can really get behind serving folks with faster speeds, especially in these areas where it's so expensive. It's definitely evidenced by the amount of this grant, how expensive it is. This is, this broadband, this grant in this county is bigger than some state broadband grant programs. So I think that's something to be excited about, too, just the influx of, just the influx of federal dollars and attention that will be coming to the county. And I think that'll help Jimmy in some of his work, which is my hope because I really want to make Jimmy happy. And I think that's a good note to close on, but I'm always happy to answer any questions that y'all have about the specifics of the program, how it came about, or about how we modeled out or any of those specifics as well.
I'll have any questions or comments?
I would just like to thank her for coming, taking the time out of your schedule to fly down here, and we appreciate you picking Swan County to push forward.
Yeah, we're happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I just, I know you want to make Jimmy happy, but I just want to apologize you have to work with him. You know? But honestly, I'm sitting here, I'm making a list, and I think the mayor spoke to it, and I do want to thank you and Jimmy. And I know when you started this, you had held a meeting down at City Hall, I believe, and had invited a couple of folks to come in. And, you know, most definitely during these times, the school system, the healthcare system, with the tele-visits and things they're doing nowadays, definitely with what you're trying to accomplish by bringing, you know, new business here, I mean, it's a win. I mean, it's definitely a win, and I just appreciate all the hard work. So. All right.
Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Norris.
Yep. Just to wrap up real quick, like you mentioned, and we didn't touch on it, you know, we're working with a couple of businesses now, and obviously, that broadband and one of the big ones out there, they need like gig, gig, gig. I mean, with all the stuff that they're doing, well, this will help us do that. So it's very important to my office and what we do, and I really do want to thank Ms. Sarah. She has worked extremely hard. And again, the mayor, when you go back to that very first meeting, it was Mayor Davis that stepped up and asked me, let's partner on this. I cannot, I mean, he's, he's been at every single meeting and every Zoom call I have been at. So please be sure that you know that he's a huge part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. At this time, do I have a motion to approve item number nine as presented?
Make a motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're going to come back to item number 10 in just a moment. Commissioner Land?
Yes, sir.
For some clarification. We're moving to item number 13. Mr. Powell, if you please come up. Sir, I want to apologize. I know we had a time specific of 5:05, and we just had some exciting news there we wanted to hear about, but.
I guess what I wanted to hear, too. I'm amazed at it, and that is, that's commendable. It's a pleasure delivering the annual audit of Swan County. I reviewed it with the chairman and clerk and staff on Monday morning, and after all of our flipping through the 245 pages, I thought that maybe we could expedite this with a handout, which I have. So, and for the people that have it, the page numbers are very small and at the bottom right. Okay, so on page eight, eight to 10 is the audit opinion. States that we conducted a full financial audit of the county, which includes the board and each of the five constitutional officers. The audit was conducted in accordance with applicable auditing standards that include financial auditing standards, government auditing standards, state single audit standards, and federal single audit standards. So in this year, you had four levels of required audit procedures. On page three, what is the audit objective to express an unmodified clean opinion on the financial statements? The county has this highest level of assurance, which is a good reflection on the quality of the financial records and internal control procedures of the board and constitutional officers. On page four, management's discussion and analysis. This section is some required overview financial information on the county. Due to the fact that it is derived from the financial statements, in the interest of time, I request that you read this section on your own, and I will go directly to the pertinent financial statements. The, slide five, the first one is the governmental funds balance sheet. The county maintains 31 governmental funds, which include nine major funds listed separately on this statement, 22 non-major funds that are shown separately on pages 97, 98. As shown on this, the balance sheet is a snapshot financial view of these funds at the end of the fiscal year, September 30, 2020. Highlights are as follows. I'm now on page six. So as to the general fund, the assets were $21,854,790. Liabilities were $2,769,537. Fund balances are cash reserves total $19,085,253. You have various classes of restrictions, but if you look at the last one, the largest one, the unassigned, $14,784,453, is unrestricted by constraints and under control of the Board of County Commissioners. Always compute how many months of expenditures that would pay for, and it's a 63.4% of expenditures, which is about almost eight months. So that is a very adequate unassigned reserve. As to total governmental funds, the assets are $47,363,168. Total reserves, $42,916,109. You can see in the total there are many, that much of that $43 million has various restrictions on it. On page seven is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. So for the general fund, the revenues were $28,202,872. Expenditures, $23,309,723. So in this year, the general fund had revenues in excess of expenditures of $4,893,149. And just to compare that, if you look under the prior year, net change in fund balance last, the year before, it was $274,623. So in analyzing that, that 4.9 million is substantially the result of receiving the CARES grant money and being able to claim expenditures that were already part of the budget. So it was, so it created that excess of revenue over expenditures. In this year, capital outlay were about $3 million, and the prior year was about $2.8 million. So overall, for these governmental funds, you had excess revenue over expenditures of That compares to the prior year when it was 1.3 million. So in these governmental funds, you had a very successful year financially. On page eight, you also have proprietary funds, which are enterprise-type funds. These funds, the intent of them is to operate off user charges so that you do not have to use your general revenues to subsidize these operations. In Swan County, that's solid waste collection, disposal, and water services. On page. On page nine, statement of net position, because these operate under business accounting principles, is the equivalent balance sheet. So total, you have three funds. In the solid waste funds, I'll just say, the fund, fund balance, basically, the net worth is $6,12377. In the solid waste fund is $1,854,466. In the water fund, it's $1,69297. So here again, that, the unrestricted portion is approximately the same as the unassigned fund balance, and you can see the percentages that those are. And this year, on page 10, the solid waste collection, and of course, these expenses include depreciation and the closure, post, the post-closure expenses of the landfill. In solid waste, it was negative $738,167. Solid waste disposal, positive $260,301. Water plant, positive $342,021. Cash, decreased in solid waste collection, increased some in solid waste disposal. On page 11 is, I always like to look at your capital assets. So again, the governmental kind of general fund and business type, that's your enterprise funds. In the governmental assets, it costs $157,108,000. Accumulated depreciation, $69,109,000. Net assets, eighty, about $88 million. The, the percent depreciated of these assets is 44%, which makes your assets actually slightly newer than other counties, of which I'm aware. The business-type enterprise fund assets, though, are 71% depreciated. Overall, you're at 45.5%, which is slightly better than you were last year, and that is a reflection of your paving and your reinvestment in capital assets. So kind of overall, to remember that your assets are slightly newer, but you have $75 million in unfunded accumulated depreciation. Everyone has that, but that's always a reason to maintain your reserves as adequate as you can. Okay, now I'm on page 12, the debt of the county. Before county, your size, the actual debt that we think of is fairly low, it's about $7, $7 million. That's your, you have two basic loans and some capital leases, but the high amounts are related to your payroll, your employee benefits, the compensated absences, 3.1 million. OPEB, which is a calculation of future employee healthcare costs, 6.6 million. Your share of the overall FRS liability is $37 million. If you think, you know, Swannee County compared to all of those others, the overall liability is very large, so. And it, again, I tell people, you're required to report that in your financial statements, but you aren't likely to receive a bill for that, but those contribution rates still continue to increase over time. Okay, on page 13, the debt in your enterprise funds, you have capital lease of $213,089. Comp absences of $149,579. The estimated landfill post-closure liability was $1,449,958 at year-end, and now it is, you've accrued sufficient funds to pay that, so your, your, your funds are even in excess of that a little bit, so while that's a liability, you, you have funded it. And then the FRS liability in enterprise funds, 1.2 million. On page 14, single audit and compliance section, as I mentioned, our audit was under government auditing standards, which, which requires audit procedures beyond just financial numbers, include internal control over financial reporting and compliance. In this report, there are no findings or questioned costs. The federal, in this year, because of your level of funding, I'm on page, anyway, it says federal and state audit report, required both a federal single audit and a state single audit. And in these, in the single audit, it requires mainly compliance procedures beyond the other procedures over the major programs. We performed those procedures, and there were no findings or questioned costs. Management letter on page 16, is required by rules of the auditor general, and contains any findings, recommendations that were not included in the prior reports, but items with which we wish to make the board and officers aware. In this letter, there were no reportable findings in the current year for either the board of county commissioners, clerk, property appraiser, sheriff, supervisor, or tax collector. So there were no findings, which is very, very commendable. Finally, we're required to also perform audit procedures regarding the county and officers' investment of public funds, E-911 grant compliance, clerks' court-related budgetary compliance, clerks' compliance with state court performance standards, clerks' administration of alimony and child support payments. We performed appropriate procedures and had no findings regarding these issues. So pleased to answer. So overall, the county was stronger at the end of the year than at the beginning of the year. You, our audit procedures did not disclose any audit findings.
Thank you, Mr. Powell, for those comments. Do I have any questions for Mr. Powell at this time?
I would like to say a job well done, because all these figures, I think I said it other time, but I wouldn't know where to begin with, begin at, and I carried us over this, and just looking at, I'm beginning to learn some, but thank you for a job well done.
Great, I appreciate that, and we appreciate working with the county.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
It's good to see progress going on, that means that all, that teamwork efforts are good.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we will return to item number 10, advertise, authorize staff to advertise for bids or proposals for hauling of solid waste. Commissioner Land, you have some questions?
Yes, sir, I had just a couple of questions or comments, I guess. We spent five hours talking about garbage and fire the other night, so I know we didn't get any bids. I was asking Mr. Harris, we didn't get any bids on the first bid that we put out for hauling, right?
We did not.
Nobody returned?
Correct, and we spoke to several companies, believing that we were going to receive some bids, but we didn't.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to talk about it briefly for a second, especially, you know, for the public, because this affects all of us, and if we can find some money to do this more competitively than what we're being charged, but in the, in the documents, there wasn't any backup. How do you anticipate any, did we, did we put this out for bid in a different manner in which we expect maybe to attract bidders this time? I don't...
When I put this together, I think I mentioned the other night, or last week, that initially my plan was just to come report to you that we didn't receive any bids, but I think it's prudent for us to go ahead and be prepared to start putting something together when it looks like it's the right time, without having to come back to the board and schedule this later. So what I, I thought is to, when I can spend more time, to be honest with you, I have been scrambling since that meeting, as everyone with finance has been doing the same thing, trying to get prepared for tomorrow and Thursday's meetings. But one thing I want to look at is the possibility of us buying trailers. Commissioner White mentioned a problem with the availability of trailers, and that is a big problem. It may be easier for us, if we can figure out how to structure that, might be easier for us to own the trailers, where all we have to do is find a company that can provide the tractors and the manpower.
Okay.
So that's an option that I'm going to be exploring and trying to put numbers together, see how we can make that work as an option. If I come up with a plan, I'll come back to the board before we do anything, and then we will consider moving forward with potentially bidding, if that looks like we can make it work. So that's just one thing I'm looking at, I'm going to try to explore a couple of other things as well, and see if we can come up with a plan.
Okay, I was just curious, and I'm sure these guys are, too, or the public was, and what we were, how we were going to bid it a little bit differently, hopefully to attract some, but...
Right now, it's tough, I mean, everyone has difficulty, every trucking company in America is having, struggling trying to find drivers, and we recognize that, I mean, it's in the news every day. So I'm not going to run out tomorrow and try to accomplish this, but I want to be prepared when it looks like the right time. I'll be bringing other information back to you as soon as I can on some options.
Okay, I was just curious where your thoughts were, and where we, you know, what we were trying to do, to try to beat those numbers that we were given.
Yeah, we desperately need to change the rate that we're paying right now on that, that hauling, it's enormous. So that has to change.
All right, thanks, I appreciate it. I'm good.
Do I have, do I have a motion to approve as presented, item number 10?
I move that we approve that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving ahead to item number 14, discuss with possible board action, tipping fees at county landfill, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, with this study, we came up with new numbers that we're going to need to change. I've spoken to Mr. Pravat about this, we can't do this right now, we've got some advertising requirements, but clearly, we're going to have to change the transfer rate. There's a difference between tipping fee and a transfer fee, but because we're in the transfer station business, we'll be changing that rate. We'll be bringing that proposal forward to you after we've properly advertised. I just want to let the board, I spoke to Mr. Land about it the other day, but I just want you to know that we're going to be working on that. I need for the board to authorize us to advertise the new rates, a resolution that we can bring forward in a public meeting, but it's going to take a couple of weeks of notice, and we still need to get it prepared. So it looks like right now, our current rate is 46.84 a ton, it looks like it's going to be $65 a ton. And then we'll also propose changing the rate, right now, it's costing us about $135 a ton for tire disposal, and we're charging $100, so we've got to change that as well. The yard debris rate, I think we're pretty well dead on, we're charging 35 a ton, and that's about the right number. So we'll be bringing some rates back to you for consideration, if the board agrees that we can go ahead and advertise for that purpose.
Any questions for Mr. Harris, comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harris, you said 65 proposed on the tipping?
Just, right.
And 135 on tires, make sure I wrote that down right.
Mm-hmm.
135 a ton on tires.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hale?
Just adding to that, and because I've gotten phone calls, this is more for public knowledge, I think, you know, when people shop at our local tire stores, there's a charge on there, and this is a result of that charge, I just want folks to know that, that, you know, those local companies are not trying to take advantage of anybody or rip them off, I mean, they have to pay to dispose these tires, and fortunately, it sounds like we've been, I think we've been down on that for a while, haven't we?
We have.
Yeah.
We have.
I think we had this conversation a year or two ago.
And we've changed companies, I mean, we do all we can to keep that cost down, but right now, everything's expensive.
Yeah, that, that's all, I just, I know sometimes I get questioned about it, where a tire store owner will tell, explain to a customer what it is, and then they've called me, and I try to explain it to them, but it's, it's not a fictitious fee in there, it's something those folks have to pay, so.
Right.
That's all.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
We need this in the form of a motion, Mr. Harris.
Yes, sir, just authorization to advertise and bring that back to the board.
So moved.
I have a, a motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Mandy, we didn't have anything additional on gentle items, thank you. At this time, we'll open the floor to public comments, if we have anyone wishing to speak, now would be the time. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Moving to closing comments, Mr. Pravat, you have anything additional?
Yes, sir, I do. One of the items that has generally come up recently with regard to solar farms, the legislature passed a bill that allows solar farms as, as a permitted use in all agricultural designated areas in the land development regulations. As we have moved through, the, our LDRs say that solar farms are by special permit. So we need an opportunity to be able to, and we, as we've gone through these special permits, we have always had conditions that we talk about on the end. Well, the legislature has said that you can only limit the conditions, so we need to get those things kind of rearranged, and we need to make a change to the LDRs to be able to do that. One of the things I had suggested to Mr. Harris was to kind of hold this off, but I would like to have you, before we start getting another application or, you know, or two, that we consider putting a moratorium on solar farms for, you know, a period of 60 days, so that we can get the LDRs changed, to get those, what conditions you would really like to see or carry those over. Legislature has basically cut down the conditions to only limiting landscaping, buffering, and, you know, the, how far away, you know, that type of thing. So by them having it by right, we can't put conditions on it, but I still think you want to have those conditions, so we just need the time. But to let you know that the next meeting, we will be addressing that and addressing, you know, what other items, one, a moratorium, and then second, which conditions you want to carry forward.
So just to clarify, you're saying that our next meeting, we're going to have it for discussion, and then we can make decisions on how we want to proceed?
Yes, sir, I just wanted you to be aware of that, though, because it's something we need to, we really need to move on.
Yes, sir. I have any questions for Mr. Pravat at this time?
Yes, I do. Mr. Pravat, is a, is a moratorium necessary? I mean, I don't want to send smoke signals to any of these power companies that we're even considering a moratorium for any reason. I understand your position, and we need some time to get some ducks in a row to, to address what the legislature has passed down to us to deal with, but do we have to go, I mean, the word moratorium?
Well, it's, if you get an application that comes in in the meantime, and they are now compliant, then we won't get an opportunity, I mean, you know, it can be a difference like the one that's up there as you pass it, you know, through Colombe County and then by Hogan Road out there, where there's nothing, you know? And right now, that's the way it would be.
Mr. Pravat, I got a question, though, just to kind of follow up what he's saying, if one did, if an application did get presented while we was working on it, maybe we could still make adjustments to their single application, correct?
Yes, sir. As long as we're talking about it, that's why I wanted to bring it up tonight, so that the next time when it comes in tomorrow, we are considering a moratorium, so we have a reason to hold and be able to, on a building permit, or, you know, that type of thing, to let it slide down the scale a little bit until we get this done. Moratorium is something I want to talk about, but if we get it done, we can just, you know, move right into the process, but I wanted you to be aware of that, because I want to have Mr. Meeks, you know, have those finalized by then.
Mr. Chairman?
Moratorium may not be necessary, but I just don't want to, I wanted to just, it's one of those things when you're doing, you know, legal matters, if you've already, y'all are already discussing it, you have a reason to delay, consider... are already discussing it, you have a reason to delay, consider an application that happens to come in between now and that time.
Commissioner Hale.
And I wanted to use that nice word moratorium in there, because that's one of those legal things that's, if you're discussing it, you get an opportunity.
Right. Uh, just a little clarification, I, I think since the Hogan Road incident, we've been pretty consistent in our request for buffering setbacks, things of that nature, but it's not, like you say, in the LDRs. So if you make the change to that, I, I guess we won't have to have those discussions every time, it'll just be.
That's, that's right.
Part of the process.
It's part of chapter, I mean, our, our section 14 of the LDRs, we have supplemental conditions that, you know, if you have a special use or other things that go along, uh, these are what you're allowed to do within those special uses or special permits. So we're going to take it and put, uh, the solar things inside the LDRs in the supplemental conditions. So when they apply, ag area.
Gotcha.
Do this.
Gotcha, okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Pravat?
No, sir, no more questions.
Anything further, Mr. Pravat?
No, sir, thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Harris? Any?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to mention for the public's benefit that, um, anyone who's planning to attend the budget workshops tomorrow, we are, we have changed the schedule slightly. We're going to break at 10:45 and then start back up at 1 o'clock, for those who want to attend the services tomorrow. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner White?
I'd just like to thank Windstream and, uh, Mr. Norris, uh, that sounds really good. I like the sound of that, but appreciate you coming all the way to do that, and appreciate all the hard work on that, and, uh, that's just about it for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Fleming?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything tonight.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Land?
Um, I'll echo what Commissioner White said, thank, I appreciate Sarah, Ms. Sarah coming down, and Jimmy and Mayor's, when she's gone, um, efforts on this, and that'll be huge for Swanee County, hopefully we'll be successful in that. Thank you, Jimmy, for, for working on that, and, and, um, I just want to, you know, let the Watson family know that our hearts are heavy, too, and, and our thoughts and prayers are with them during a unimaginable time, and, uh, we'll hopefully be there tomorrow with them. But, uh, one other thing that I wanted to, to mention to the, to the board and to all of you guys, is, is something I've, I've thought about over the last week or so, during the fire and the, and the garbage stuff, I spoke to, just doing research, at least five different counties, on what they were doing, how they were doing it, you know, what, what they were seeing, and, um, some of them were comparable, some of them weren't, but the, the one topic that every one of them brought up was the minimum wage law, and how in the world they were going to handle it. And, uh, you know, in the private sector, you just raise your prices. Well, you don't really have that liberty, we're sitting where we're sitting. So it, it's a, it's a really big nut for every county to try to crack, and it, that's, they're all worried about it, and they're all trying to figure out what to do, but one thing that a lot of them were doing, and I'd like for this board to consider thinking about doing it, and it's kind of one of those things, um, you know, you may be careful what you wish for, but I think it would be, uh, a very valuable piece of information, and that is a, um, like a salary analysis study done by department, by position, to determine what our compression issue is, or if we even have one. That's, that's what everyone's really worried about, is, is, is how to, one, get to the 1550 in the next five years, and then, secondly, how in the world are they going to handle compression? Because, and they, and they don't really know, do they have one, or do they not? And, and how big is it? And, uh, a lot of those smaller counties that I talked to that are similar to us, they've all either are doing them, or have done them, to try to help with this minimum wage thing. I mean, they're, that's scaring them to death on how they're going to get there with, you know, limited revenue, so I, I think it's something that maybe we should look at doing. I think GSG maybe could do them. I don't know the cost of it, I haven't inquired, have no idea what it costs, um, depending on the depth, from what I've learned, it would be to, you know, would determine the cost on how far they went with it, but, uh, you know, that, that, in my talks with them about fire and garbage and what they were doing, the one thing that was consistent every time was the minimum wage thing, and how they were going to get there, is, is really, it, it's, it's, it's not going away, and so, and it's a really big number over, over time, so I, I mean, I'd like for y'all to think about that, it's not something we need to make about tonight, but a, a lot of our counterparts are doing it, just to, to try to help, come up with ideas. I'm just going to share that with you guys, but.
Any additional?
No, sir, just the Watson family, we're thinking about them heavily.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hale?
I'll, I'll obviously echo everyone's, uh, words on the Watson family, and again, thank you to Jimmy, I know we give you a hard time, but we do appreciate you, and the mayor, I think slipped out as well, but, uh, Shannon and Windstream, appreciate all you guys, and I know this, uh, this application is, I think, like one we've never seen, but I appreciate all the hard work going into that. Is the chief here? Yeah, Chief Hans here. I, I don't know, I'm sure he's aware of this, I just wanted to mention this, because I had two of the commissioners from Columbia County reach out to me. Here's just one of the text messages, says, uh, kudos to the fire department here, had a funeral for the former EMS director, uh, our honor guard was there in full uniform, it was hot, hot, hot Saturday, and they performed flawlessly. So they, they really appreciate them, so tell them thank you for us, and obviously for Columbia County, so, nothing else.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to get a couple of updates real quick, if we could. Commissioner Land, update on your dad for us?
Yes, sir. Uh, doing much better, home for two weeks now.
Awesome.
Yep, doing much better, and, uh, every day gets a little bit bigger appetite and can walk a little farther, so.
Good deal.
Hopefully, he's on the mend, I appreciate all the thoughts and prayers, he's, he's been in the hospital more than the last two months than he's been home, so it's good to be there.
And I spoke with Commissioner Fleming, and I hear his wa, his, uh, mother's home.
She's home.
At the hospital, awesome.
Yes, she's doing good.
We're, uh, we're grateful for that.
Thank you. She appreciate, I let her know that it asked about it.
Yes, sir. I would, I would like to just make a comment about, nothing is more valuable than family and life, uh, and trust me, if this wasn't a publicly advertised meeting, we wouldn't be here right now, when we have a family of this county suffering, and we got people of this county that's, uh, lost a friend and a loved one, we wouldn't be here right now, if this wasn't already advertised. Same thing with tomorrow, if it wasn't advertised way ahead of time, and we have rules and regulations we have to follow, we wouldn't be here tomorrow at all. We would be allowing everybody to spend all day with those folks, as we intend to also as a board. So, uh, I just want to be clear on that, that it's, a lot of times, we're doing things that's not by choice, it's, uh, it's mandated, and we're just following procedure, and trust me, none of us up here, it makes us happy to be doing it in a time when folks are suffering and, and we're concerned about them, so I just want, I just want everyone in the county to know that, and especially the Watson family. My thoughts and prayers are with them. Also, with the Sheriff's Department, I mean, they, they've lost a, they've lost an important person and a friend to all of them, someone that, that worked hard for this county and, and was proud of this county, and, uh, it's, it's a tough day for Swanee County. I don't have anything further this time, just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hale.
Land.
Land, I'll second.
I'm sorry. No, second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.